Okay, we're ready to go. Welcome, everyone. This is Lisa Edinburgh, Chair of the Westboro School Committee. Today is Wednesday, September 7th, 2022. This meeting of the Westboro School Committee is called to order. Please stand if you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you for joining us this evening. I'd like to notify everyone in the room with us tonight that this meeting is being recorded by Westboro TV. School committee meetings are available for remote viewing or listening on Westboro TV's government channels, Verizon 28 and Charter 192, and online on the Westboro TV YouTube channel. Thank you to Westboro TV for covering the broadcast this evening. We have with us tonight Superintendent Amber Bach, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Daniel Mayer, Director of Finance and Administration David Gordon, Vice Chair of the Westboro School Committee Steve Duratt, School Committee Members Steve Bachelor and Kristin Vincent. We're missing Ragunandan this evening, unfortunately. Our Student Representative Aratrika Grosh. Recording Secretary Jen Benton will be here soon, and we have staff from Westboro TV here. And I'd like to personally welcome everyone sitting in front of us, and those of us watching from home, welcome. Our agenda for this meeting is as follows. We'll begin with an approval of amended minutes from August 29th, 2022 Regular Session Meeting. Then hear from Amber Bach with the Superintendent's Report, followed by the Assistant Superintendent's Report, then the Director of Finance Administration's Report, then we'll hit you up with the School Committee Member Reports, followed by the Building Project Updates. We'll then hear from some citizens during citizens' requests, should we have any, and then a request for an approval of a trip to Italy planned for April 2023, followed by an update of the schedule for budget review. Soon thereafter, we'll have a preliminary budget discussion. Then we'll take, that will take us into a discussion of the Fall Town Meeting Warrant Article, and we'll continue with an update and potential approval of the Student Resource Officer Contract Amendment. We'll continue with the reappointment vote of the Superintendent to the Assavet Valley Collaborative Board. Then we'll be looking at updating a couple of school committee policies. Finally, we'll enter into an executive session and then adjourn for this evening. So we will begin with an approval of the amended minutes from August 29th, 2022. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Under the busing update, the seventh sentence should read, quote, "That's an exchange of three minibuses for three large buses due to capacity issues, with only one additional minibus." And the ninth sentence should read, "Windows remain open, weather permitting, plus optional masking on the buses." Twelfth sentence should read, "No additional cost to the budget for the exchange of three minibuses to three large buses." Any others? All in favor? I see a vote of four to zero, four being present. We have passed the amended minutes, and we'll move on to the Superintendent's Report. Amber, take it away.
Thank you. I am pleased to be here for our second official meeting and the day five of the opening of what has been a really enjoyable start to our school year. We have rained to hopefully keep the fall foliage on its tree so we can enjoy it. We've had the opening of sports. We've had smooth bus runs overall and just a really enjoyable start. We have all been around the district. From Central Office, Daniel and I were debriefing today and just talking about how everyone is really enjoying the sense of momentum and focus and energy that has come with the start of the school year, and we look forward to lots of good things ahead. I was going to take an opportunity tonight to share with you an update of the Armstrong Playground Plan, just to share something different. We try to bring you different types of highlights. I know a lot of families, and we gave you an update that this project was moving forward and that we now have the equipment on order. It's delayed, but we are in the queue, and it will arrive, and we will install it as soon as possible along with the soft play surface. And so I thought it would be enjoyable for you tonight to see the finalized layout of the selected play equipment and to kind of give you a few highlights. The play equipment is handicap accessible, and there's some very nice features here. You see the swing set has a variable swing set that gives access to students who want more kind of protected swinging. You see the teeter totter, which is again a really safe, updated version of the highly dangerous ones we played on when we went to school. These really are built to give all of the fun without as many of the safety risks as our original model. You also see then, it looks like a little hammock. That's actually a modified kind of hammock slash swing where you can, two people can sit on that and lay on it and swing back and forth. Just really a nice variation of play equipment that's become quite popular. And then you see the two large play actual structures. One more first through third, and then the other, a really K-sized, small, really nicer piece of play equipment sized appropriately for kindergarteners. That's been a piece of the Armstrong Playground that's really been missing is the amount of K equipment available. And it's the only one of our schools where we've had one playground instead of two. And we're really pleased to see a nice range of age-appropriate play structures now available. And you also see then a really nice piece of equipment over there. It looks like a little mini merry-go-round. It is a type of spinning, again wheelchair accessible, and there's a version of this over at the Fails Playground. It doesn't have the topper and the decoration, so this one's a little bit more showy and kind of a variation on that. And that's actually dedicated, and we'll talk about that when we open the playground. And then you see a couple areas where there are play boards where you can make some music. So really nice variety, and the play surface will now be appropriately leveled and safety accessible. And a feature that we added to the structure, and it'll be worth a walk down when we get this done, is we're then going to put a sidewalk that runs the perimeter along the edge of the woods and on around, which again increases accessibility, and it adds a feature where a lot of kids like to take a tricycle or a scooter and be able to go around the peripheral. You see a very mini version of that at the preschool, which is a really popular activity as they have little tricycles and the kids like ride around the peripheral on the path. So this will have that available feature as well for kids to chalk and walk, and adds a really nice play dimension beyond just the blacktop area, which is still available. And then we've really done some nice grounds work there to clear. And one of the pieces of that was that I want to give a shout out to John Friar, who also then did clean-cut tree work to get the shade off of that back corner of Armstrong, where it was tending to get a little moist around the corner of that building because we couldn't get any sunshine there. So you have the combination of the new roofing, but you also have better light on that back corner. So some really nice features of how that is going to feel when we are done. We had originally thought we were going to need to do a little bit more of a substantial wall area along the tennis courts, and we didn't need to do that, so we then moved to the idea of the sidewalk around, and we've done some nice, really collaboration on making this, I think, the best that we possibly could. So that's good news. I'll keep you updated as we move forward. But I just think these are, you know, celebrations of warrant articles and fundraising and collaboration for the Buildings and Grounds Team that they've just done a really good job. Kelly Giacappello took point on this project, done a very nice job coordinating it and bringing it towards completion in the spring. Also want to just acknowledge I was at Armstrong today and the roof looked amazing and that we had a ton of rain and no leaks in that section of the building, which people were actually talking about today as a celebration. So, you know, I think it feels really good to see those projects achieved successfully without any delays and looking like the work was really high quality. So again, a shout out to Kelly and her coordination on that project. And that's my report for tonight.
Great, 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 great. Good news. And great to see the updates on the equipment. No merry-go-rounds that send you railing out the side with some tropical force. Daniel, what do you have for us this evening?
Just, I want to echo what Amber was saying, that we're off to a good start. When we met last week, the kids hadn't arrived yet, and, you know, just that we were reporting on how the faculty, the mood of the faculty, and the opening day ceremonies for the staff. But the kids and the faculty, seeing them together with masks off, energy high, building, you know, community at this time of year, you walk into the classrooms. It's a lot of discussion of getting to know you, getting the kids to, you know, tell a little bit about themselves, their hobbies, their likes, and, you know, establishing class rules. It's just a warmth and excitement that's there. It's very present. I've been in most of the buildings at this point, and yeah, so it's just, it's a pleasure to see. And we're just hearing preliminary reports that it just feels really different than it did at the beginning of last year because it's coming off of COVID and going from, you know, the hybrid model to even though we were in person, people, everybody was masked and there was all the social distancing, and there was a sense of kids hadn't been in the routine of coming to school in a normal way. And so, you know, there are comments about, oh, they know how to get online and walk down the hall, you know, and interact in a social way, that, you know, that there were some of the basic social skills that, of being in a school building that at the beginning of last year where we were finding we were struggling with, and people are pleasantly surprised that, you know, things feel more, much more normal, so.
Feel the energy. So, Dave, any reports?
No updates tonight. I'll save them for budget discussion and later in the agenda.
Okay, so we'll move right on to school committee reports, and we'll start with Aratrika.
As the school committee meetings have been close together, most schools sent their updates for our previous meetings, so it's quite brief today. But between the summer and now, NHS has recorded well over 2,000 hours at the high school for community service already. And at the moment, they're focusing on ticket sales for football games and such. The open houses for all of the schools are set mostly for late September. And the high school is currently preparing for a numerous amount of college representative visits that are about to take place there. The main, I guess, thing that came up at the high school was there's been plenty of discourse among students over the new phone slash electronic usage policies that place at the school, along with the headphone usage policy that was now enforced at the school. But yeah, that's all I have for the report.
Okay. Steve, do you have something for us?
Yeah, I have just one item to report. Next Thursday, September 15th at 6:00 PM, the Westboro CPAC, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, will be hosting its first meeting of the school year. It'll be a virtual meeting. We will be having in-person events to follow, but our first meeting is going to be held virtually. That, the link to that Zoom meeting is available online at westburrowscpac.us or on our Facebook page. Thank you.
Kristin?
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
And Steve, do you want to wait until your building updates? Okay, so for myself, just a reminder, there are many open houses coming up for all six buildings. And so keep an eye out for your emails and even just emails in general throughout the year. There's a lot of information that comes to you that's important for you to read through about your child's school. It also gives you access to where to communicate when you have questions. So it's really important to read your emails. Just bring that up. And I want to thank the teachers for the energy that seems to be contagious for our students because it's very apparent that it is all around. I think there is something so much about face-to-face that starts early, where it really draws people closer together and creates connection. And we're seeing that so live, day-to-day with our own kids and our teachers and staff. So we're off and running. And then just a reminder, Westboro Connects is holding an event, Westboro for Life, at Westboro High School on Sunday, September 11th, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. Make sure to mark your calendars and stop by the resource table to say hello. And this is being hosted, sponsored by the Westboro Civic Club and Westboro Women's Club. And it's geared towards Westboro residents who are 45 years plus. And so we'll move right over to Building Project Updates. Steve?
Well, the good news for me is I have very little to talk about tonight, and that's because Fails is finally coming to an end. There's only one structure left to build, which is a shade structure. It's on order, has been for a while. It's on the street side of the major playground that's in the back of the upper, excuse me, the middle, let's call it the middle parking lot. And it has a very minor foundation structure, and it should go up quickly. But anyway, it is the last thing to do. I just drove by there on the way to the meeting tonight and found a lot of kids playing on the recently completed playgrounds. There's two, a small one and a bigger one, and they are really interesting in the sense of what they feel like. And because Fails is on a slope, there's also a climbing area of the bigger playground. And the kids were having a really good time. So it makes you feel good that the effort that the town has put into that project, as well as many of us on this side of the table, you know, over the almost three years that that project has been going. Besides the final structure, obviously the grass is growing very well. Thank God for the rain that we just had. The lower field, as I mentioned the last time, is basically weeds, and the contractor will have to come back in the spring next year to deal with it. And because of that need, it probably won't be useful for a playground until the fall of next year. But otherwise, the project seems to be working out quite well. We're working on some of the final component pieces within the building, and hopefully we'll be done with those in a month's time. So again, as I said, not much to say about it, but that's because we're on the final slope to finish the job. And as we have been saying all along, we still have some money left, and so we're on budget. And unfortunately, we're late on schedule, but COVID didn't help us much with that. So thank you.
I think to complement that, I agree, there's many fine pieces of this project. And when you work on something so long-term, it's gratifying to see pieces of how it begins to come together. I wanted to acknowledge too that we will do a community-wide open house and ribbon cutting that will be a formal part of completion of the project as we look towards being able to get these final pieces done and get the, you know, all the final touches. Hopefully sometime this fall, I'm thinking, hopefully, you know, mid-October potentially. We'll see. We're just going to time where we are with things, but it's certainly an important town celebration to look towards.
I left one thing out. The lower parking lot doesn't have the finished pavement on it, but that will happen in the next couple of weeks. So I didn't leave it out on purpose.
I'm taking notes. Okay, so this is the part of our meeting where we continue with citizens' requests. I'm first going to ask if anyone's here for citizens' requests before I mention our policy. Because it doesn't seem like we have anyone here for citizens' requests. So although we are also ahead of schedule. So I am, as Chair, going to take it upon myself to rearrange our menu here for the evening. And I will use that charge to come back to citizens' requests should someone show up at the allotted time where it's from 6:35 to 6:40. So we'll move right along to our next agenda item after that, which is a request for approval of trip to Italy. And I think we have a guest here, Nikki Miller.
Thank you. We have Nikki here to present the trip and to walk you through it. Come on up and have a seat. Nikki, welcome back to the school year. One of our favorite parts of school committee is a chance to entertain and discuss trips for our students. And this represents an expansion beyond just our language trips into more cultural and historic trips as well. So I'm excited to hear about it.
Yes, I'm here to ask that you approve my request for a trip to Italy, Venice, Florence, and Rome, April of Vacation 2023.
Pretty exciting. So one of the things that's helpful, if you can give us a couple of highlights around the number of students that you're going to be allowing and chaperone ratio, those are the types of things, having done a few of these, that the school committee likes to just get a couple of highlights on, if you can give them?
Absolutely. Nikki, just make sure you speak right into the microphone because folks at home.
Thank you. This is better. So there's currently a waiting list for the other April trip. So we talked to EF about offering those people a spot first to go. So that would be nice because they've already expressed interest in traveling. And we're just going to clear it with the teacher who's running that trip. And so that, because those, she already has her students actualized according to EF. So we're going to open that up to those students first. So we could get anywhere between six from that waiting list, or maybe up to 40, I think, is one bus. So for my first trip, I really wouldn't want to take more than one bus the first time. So anywhere from six to 40, and the chaperone ratio is the six children to every one adult. So after, I have a few retired teacher friends who have a lot of experience, who I'll draw from first and then open it up because a lot of teachers are traveling already this year. And then see if any, you know, teachers want to go, depending on how many people I get signed up. So it is six to one. That's EF's ratio. So, yeah.
What's the other trip that's happening at that time?
The other trip, well, February of 2023 is Costa Rica. But then also in April is a trip to Paris in the Alps, Switzerland, Austria.
And that was approved earlier by you guys. This is a nice compliment to that trip. I would think that students who had been interested in the one might well hop over and do this as well. And so it's certainly a nice, a nice option, and the time of year should be good as well. Questions, just in general for Nikki? I mean, we know EF tours well. They run a well-shaped tour where the people that are sponsoring it and organizing it provide a lot of structure and support to the teachers, and we provide the personal connection and management of kids, but I'll open it up to questions.
And I have done two in the past years. I've been teaching for 27 years, so when I first started, I did two EF tours, and they were, they were fantastic experiences. So I have lots of experience traveling with kids, if that's one of your questions. I also did Appalachia Service Project this summer, going to Kentucky with a bunch of, mainly Westboro kids, it's through Westboro, so I have lots of experience traveling with kids, so that's important to know.
So my first question is, what will the, what will the cost be for the students?
Twenty-six hundred.
And how long will you be there?
It will be a Saturday-to-Saturday trip.
Okay.
So it says.
And the flight? The flight arrangements? Will you fly out of Boston?
Yes, we will fly out of Boston.
That's good. So that's a direct flight, I think, to Milan?
I believe it's direct. They haven't, they haven't said otherwise, but I know we'll fly out of Boston, and I know it'll be Saturday-to-Saturday, are the requested dates. It could possibly be a Friday-to-Friday, right? It'll be Friday night, but she, they, they're really hoping it's going to be Saturday. That's the request. It could be a day or two either way, but she doesn't think it'll be a problem. The tour guide, the EF person I'm working with, her name's Nora, she thinks we should get our Saturday-to-Saturday dates.
Do you know what airline it is?
I don't.
Yeah, but it's probably out of Italia, but could be anybody, really.
Yeah, I don't know airline. They use the same airline. That's a good question. I don't know that.
And I think this is less than other trips. I, you know, we've approved quite a few trips that are in the...
Yeah, this is, cost-wise, it's on the, a little bit on the lower end. We've had a couple that have, that have been more expensive. I think the Costa Rica trip is more than that.
Yeah.
And I, I don't think it was, I, I know it's in, in the information you gave, but I don't think the, the discussion we had here has the routing, so it's Milan to Florence to, excuse me.
Venice.
Venice, Venice, Florence.
Then Florence, and then Rome.
Yeah. That's a long ride.
Yeah.
Having done it, and done it the hard way. Italian, Italian roads are kind of tough, because here, when you have an intersect, interstate that intersects, you have a ramp. They don't do that in Italy. You have to get off to the town and then get on the other one, which is, you know, my, my learning experience in, in Italy. But, you know, you're going over the mountains when you come back to head to Rome and to Florence, too. And if you have Mario Andretti driving the bus, you're likely to have some sick kids, but in the sense of...
All part of the travel experience, Mr. Della.
There you go. Yeah, 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 yeah. Anyway, that's, those are my questions. Thank you.
And there's a tour guide, so that even when you're in the bus, you're getting history and you're receiving a lot of information while you go, and, and you're forming connections with each other and people you didn't know from the high school, and there could be another group if you're too small and...
Yes, we could, 40, if we're under 40, we'll be, share a bus with another tour group.
So you meet new people and...
Well, it's exciting.
Quite exciting.
One, one of the things I did learn, and it cost me a fortune to learn it, was that on the, on the shore side of Venice, there's a railroad that goes out to Venice, and most people either, you know, take a cab or something like that. Cost me 35 bucks to get from the shore to the, to the, to the wharf, if you will, to cross to, to Venice. Costs 25 cents to go home on the railroad. So, just, when you're, if you're driving, i.e. if the bus takes you there, the causeway that's right next to you is the railroad. It's a tremendous experience. I think the kids will really enjoy it. And of course, one of our standard questions is, is a report from them in terms of what they learned by going there. My feeling for these travel adventures for the kids is to see what the rest of the world is like, and have an opportunity to experience that and figure out how we fit as Americans into the world. It's usually quite a learning experience for kids that haven't been out of Massachusetts or at least not very far. And one of the other things is, if you can figure out how to do it, to set it up so that they can meet some of their peers in some location, so they can kibitz and, you know, have that as a learning experience as well. So, anyway, good luck.
Oh, Aritika, did you have something?
I just had a question. So like the, you said 2,600 was the price, like what's included for students in that price?
Oh, yes, so that's a great question. So what's included is the flight, hotel accommodations, all of the admissions to all of the sightseeing, which, as EF points out, it's, sometimes it's, it's not just the price, it's the access, it's getting the tickets when you're there. They said that's a huge plus of going on any, I think that was interesting, that you're, you're guaranteed, like, we're going to get in Suvatican City, we're going to get in, I don't think we're going to get a private audience with the Pope, but we're going to get in, you know, we're, we're going to see the Colosseum, we're going to see all of these things, and so it includes that, and includes two meals. It includes breakfast at the hotel and a dinner, and then we're on our own for lunch, and obviously, transportation within Italy from the places. So the kids will need money to tip their guide, our, our guide, and our bus driver, and spending money and money for lunch.
By the way, it can be very cold in the morning, but very hot in the afternoon, so they should bring both kinds of clothes.
We have a volunteer.
Layers, layers, right.
Do, do we have a volunteer for us as a chaperone?
It's the trip.
Did one trip, and we had a blast, so, yeah. She's listening, she's probably got mine all set already.
What is the ratio for like student to supervisors going on the trip?
Yeah, that's six to one. So for every six children, students, we bring one adult. And then there could be a little, like, there could be up to like 15, if, if it's, the numbers are small. So it's, it's about six. It could be a little bit over, but about six.
So the one thing I've never asked is that April Vacation draws athletes to not be able to go without penalty. And I don't think they know it until April Vacation comes and they discover they're on a trip, and then there's a penalty for not being there during April Vacation for some varsity sports. So I just think it's great to know ahead of time. It might be helpful to just mention to the people signing up that there's that. I don't thi, I just don't think it's discussed, because it's so far in advance that you're signing up, and then...
And that's great to check with the athletic director and our assistants to see, because I know with COVID, things were a little more relaxed for certain sports, certain seasons, right? So that's a great, that's a great point.
Right, that they may not play because they missed a game or a practice or something. But no, it's very exciting. I am very much for this. We're going to take, does anyone have a motion to approve the EF Tour Italy Florence Venice and Rome trip from April 15th, 2023, to April 22nd, 2023?
So move.
Westboro High School. And do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's a four to nothing vote, all four being present. Congratulations.
Enjoy.
We look forward to hearing, maybe seeing, oh, you know what we've done in the past? Is we've had someone come and talk about their trip afterwards. We haven't done it in a while, because we haven't had any trips.
And so, just to add to this, because you know what, I have many fans who watch during the, the meetings. Brian says, no, there is not a penalty, field trips related to academic supersede sports. So it's important to recognize that if somebody is choosing to be gone at April break for a trip, they ask families to be aware of that, making choices, but an academic trip superseds. Just to clarify on the record, so we don't use the word penalty related to travel and sports. So that's good news to be able to share, and just wanted to correct. So Brian is just there to...
Thank you, Brian Callahan, for listening to our meetings and tuning in and chiming in.
I know he wanted to be here tonight.
He wants to go too.
I got this, Brian. Very exciting, and I, I'm so glad to hear that.
File for your support. Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering to take them.
Yes, thank you.
Welcome back to the year.
Okay, I'm also going to make a call here that, even though I see no citizens, that we're moving on from that discussion, that, that piece of our agenda. There will be, there are no citizens here to speak, so we're moving on and we will not be coming back to that. And we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is the schedule for the budget review. Dave?
Thank you. So, attached, and you will see, first and foremost, I should start by saying, this is a draft version. Some of the dates, you know, with flexibility, alignment of people's schedules, the ability for us to, excuse me, to set up meetings with Town Finance Committee and things of that nature, could have some modifications with these dates, but we put these dates out so not only school committee members, constituents, everyone can be involved and see exactly the dates that we placed on the calendar related to this year's budget process. One of the great things about Westboro for me personally is that Westboro's, while fast, it, it really does allow us the opportunity to sink our teeth into the budget, think thoroughly, think, not only experience what we've noticed through the beginning of the year, but work with what we ended with at the end of the year, and then execute it and have a budget kind of in place before the end, you know, around the, around the new year. So for me, that's, personally, I think that's very helpful, and the fact that town meeting is in March to vote on it, I really much, very much appreciates the process and the, you know, the speed and expedited process that we have. Again, I don't know if it makes sense to go through all the dates. As you can see, what we did is we aligned all the, the school committee meetings with the meetings that are currently set up. You will notice that basically from October 19th through November 25th, it is kind of a compressed schedule. Again, the flexibility will mostly be around the 14th, so we'll work on kind of making sure that that aligns with everybody's schedules, ensure that the finance committee and liaisons and things of that nature are available, those dates. We obviously do provide updates, and we will share those on the web, but as you can see, November is really essentially the crunch time for us. You know, Superintendent Bach, Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Daniel Mayer, myself, we're really in the trenches between October, November, trying to hammer out the, the budget process. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Again, these are draft dates, but if you scroll up just a little bit, Daniel, you'll be able to see, I'm sorry, down, yeah, thank you. The November 25th date is actually the, the date we advertised, that is actually Thanksgiving. So, you know, there may be the 24th or the 25th, it really depends on our charter, but again, it will be within the, a day or two of the 25th. And then the December 14th is the school committee at which we vote, and hopefully the, the budget is approved by the school committee members. And on the 23rd is, we're going to do some review on that date, but we, we believe that is a factual date where it actually gets put forward to the town, and then we move forward, and essentially, that is a recommended school committee budget that you guys endorse after it's vetted through the dates above.
And I think, I, I've got to double-check, I can't remember, and I should remember after all these years, what the actual charter date is, because there's a date of submission to select board. I thought it was December 21st, but then last year's calendar, we had noted it was the 23rd. So I just, I texted Christie just to confirm, we'll make sure that either way, like, our vote, your final vote, happens the Wednesday before, and then we have time to complete any presentation notations, clean up the online budget version, and submit our numbers and our budget book to the town by that date. And typically, an amendment to that process is that in the past, we used to deliver the budget books on that day. We now send the online version, and then we take time to go ahead and produce the book when we return the first two weeks in January, and deliver the hard copies, you know, usually within the time where we start all the budget discussions. Because you remember, of course, as we know, the submission of the number is just to open up the whole range of trajectory of conversations, defense, and, and inquiry, all the way through till town meeting. So the budget books will deliver in the, within probably a week.
Yeah. The only, the only thing that I would add is that last year, we made some minor adjustments to the budget book, just kind of more current, updated, kind of a version of easier-to-read process. We're going to continue to do that to get to a format that we see as, you know, that we love, that is transparent, but at the same time, we will get it out as soon as we can. But again, just minor tweaks, may delay it here or there, but we'll definitely keep you updated. And that book will follow up extremely shortly thereafter.
It's good to hear that, you know, we'll see improvements on that, that process.
Yeah, I mean, the, the content is there, and the, the, all of the recounting of the numbers has always been there. I just think stylistically, the presentation pieces and the writing on the different departmental structures, and some of the other highlighted pieces, it's been a while since we updated those, and I think running a little bit more parallel for readers to have the town and the school budget book, I mean, Christie really reformatted when she came on board, and so I think, you know, Dave's got a picture of what, what he thinks works, and so I think they'll end up a little closer together, so.
And so that, Mike Vareti has walked in, and the Advisory Finance Committee, welcome, that they'll be able to read it more readily with new members that come in. The budget book we're discussing about some changes so that it's more accessible and more readable. Okay, that's great. Are there any questions for Dave about our budget review calendar?
We added one date in there, the Budget Summit is in there, you see?
Oh, yeah.
No, that's okay. I was just going to say, it's nice to have these upfront, so I can just get them all into my calendar.
Yes.
Make sure they're, you know, top of mind, because they involve some meetings outside of our own meetings, so.
Exactly, and some of them are subcommittee meetings that don't involve everyone, but we do usually pull a couple of different people to the table, as Dave and I usually meet with the FinCom liaisons, and usually, somebody rotationally from the school committee joins us, so we have shared conversation, and I think we can talk about that as we get closer to the rotation of those meetings.
And just for the school committee to know that you are all welcome to all the meetings, you know, you don't need to be on the rotation, you can just simply join and join the discussion as well, and...
Yeah, well, you just can't have a quorum, so you can have two. You can't have more than two. So you can rotate it, which we do, but we can't have more than two. And I, I think it's better to have a fair continuity of this, at least one of the two as an anchor, because we're trying to thread together conversations and questions that FinCom has, and I think, you know, the budget itself is complex, and we're at an advantage in the sense that the liaison that added in is, is Mike, so, you know, he's got a really, a good handle on, on the layout of the budget and the pacing of it. So I think this year's discussions should be valuable, so looking forward to it.
Okay. Thank you, Dave and Amber. We're going to move right along to our next agenda item, which at this time is the preliminary budget discussion.
So this is a 10,000-foot view. Again, it echoes the start, it's verbal update only, to just get your juices thinking about the budget. The timeline is always a shocker, like, it escalates the pacing of the year when you realize that by the time you head into really a section of the holidays after Thanksgiving, that the budget is done, before we've even really cracked, you know, the, the start of the year in many ways in terms of major expenditures. But the, the Budget Summit is a practice that we have held now for, I think we held our first one right before COVID, and then we did one virtually. This will be a return to the format where the boards come together in the evening at a 6 o'clock meeting, I believe it's here, and we, our goal is to surface open conversation for the major areas that we're beginning to look at in the budget that, that might pose challenges or opportunity. So you're looking at it with the lens of opportunity and, and challenges. And so, tonight, I wanted to start by just opening up the conversation to say Dave and I are starting to look at those, and I thought it would be an opportunity to name those that we're starting to think about. We're not running numbers on those yet, but we're starting to like, look at the areas that we need to dig into. I wanted to share in that conversation with you, I think it's good for the community to hear multiple passes on areas as we move towards the summit and the start of the budget. So in looking at '24... So in looking at '24, I wanted to name some areas that I see us starting to think about. One as an example is that we are currently in contract negotiations with all of our units. So FY '24 will reflect the increases of those settlements. And I think, you know, right now, there's always a trajectory of variability to when we settle those. None of them will be settled, I believe, to flow into FY '24. And if, therefore, you're looking at a March budget amendment on the floor, if the contract is ready to pull forward, or in some cases, if you're still negotiating, it's usually in the fall. Those are the two times when all of the departments, inclusive of Christie and the town, come forward with settled contracts. We certainly are hoping, and I think all of our major units are feeling that we hope to have our contracts resolved in time for town meeting. And that's the target that Kristin and Steve are utilizing. So that's one of the examples of one that we want to start letting people kind of telegraph about. Another one that I think will be, we're trying to figure out, and Dave chime in with your list. The other one is really looking at the recovery from the tuition's impact and trying to understand the rotation of that impact into FY '24. And when we think that circuit breaker might increase against that increased number to give us some offset in the budget. But I, you know, that's a pretty live discussion that Dave is really the heart of that analytical work. And I'm asking him lots of questions right now. And I tend to come down every morning with like three more I thought of at night. And we start this phase of kind of conversation around these big topics. And the what ifs and howabouts are kind of what it looks like for us organically as we start to look at areas that are complicated. Obviously, tuition, special education, unanticipated costs are an arena that, you know, we've always talked about. It's been a very long time since we've had a cycle where the impact led to the need to ask for an increase as we're looking at right now. So certainly not in my nine years here and, you know, so. So we'll be trying to understand the implications of that rolling into FY '24. Dave, do you have other ones that you think?
One that I would add is specifically just keeping a very watchful eye on transportation, the bus driver shortage and things of that nature and the impact of that. All of that can trickle into, while our AM/PM service with NRT seems to be going very well and we are essentially the model for a lot of districts, a lot of districts, you know, there's special education, transportation, VN Pool, and their driver shortage is something to be cognizant of and for us to be mindful of. We want to make sure that not only are we, have some options to entice if necessary, to make sure that we don't suffer any impact to service in getting kids to any location that they need to be at, but at the same time, you know, there's budget impacts. So we want to be cognizant of what does that mean for us from a budget impact? But also, you know, from a vendor standpoint is that we don't want to create this sort of inequity for any vendor that we use. Whereas if we, as Westboro, have the ability, which has yet to be decided, to maybe increase rates for van drivers, what is that? What would the potential impact do to that vendor saying, or we don't want to create some sort of mass exodus with other districts or anything like that? So they may or may not approve of that. So we really are starting to feel out a lot of different things with the driver shortage issues. But again, for us, AM/PM service, you know, knock on wood, has been very successful. We just want to be mindful of any impact related to student transportation, especially students with disabilities and how that may or may not impact. And what are some offsets for us and how we can be innovative and think outside of the box related to enticing, you know, kind of recruitment and retention for drivers if necessary?
I think transportation has been stable for us, but we also had a very large increase when we negotiated the new contract. And I think worked to absorb that through a range of other cuts and mitigations at the time. When we look, the other piece, I would say, for me, the only other particular one that I think is, has big numbers attached is continuing to look at our capital projects. So currently, Dave is working with Bob Ferguson and Kelly GiCapello to go back and do a reassessment of all of our capital projects, given that we had the changing of the order of our allotments with the Armstrong roof intervention that the town was, you know, amazingly generous and creative with to help us solve that problem of the emergency repair. So now they're going back and they're going to look at all our major capital projects again and see what can be managed and allocated differently that we could get some more opportunity to stretch those projects out across the five years. And they're doing that assessment and we'll be trying to come in with some of those if we feel like there's real targeted ones that will hit in '24 or '25 that we want to call out and make sure that we're talking about. Again, those tend to be big projects like roof projects. And we have Hastings that's got the complications of the ADA and the HVAC and the roof. There's three big pieces that remain. And we're trying to get the puzzle of that building kind of organized while we're also looking to stretch out the impact of the capital projects while I know that we're discussing the town's library and other types of major important improvements that are necessary. As a part of that, I just want you to know that the RFQ is moving for, is RFQ? I always say RFP, it's RFQ, I think.
RFP?
For the assessment of our buildings and grounds again. So we are going to put out a request for services so that we can get a new assessment. The DRA report was the one that anchored all of our interventions over the last nine to 10 years. That report's now heading into its 10th year. The data is done. We need a new fresh cycle. That won't hit in time for the adjustments to this particular year, but it will give us fresh data for basically the next six. And we'll be able to stabilize our capital project needs against fresh data. And I think that gets in the queue with what the town is working on to do the same for its capital projects where we won't have to move them around so much. Because when you make a capital plan, if you come back again and you're moving big numbers a lot every year, it's not really a plan then. So, you know, we'd like to get it a little bit more stabilized. I think we've taken some really good steps with leadership from Kim, Christie, and the group of, and you guys and the group that worked on kind of setting it up. I think now we need to really stabilize it. I think that's a big part of the year ahead. And so I'm hopeful that that data will give the schools, which are big players with six buildings, a very strong anchor that our numbers don't need to move around. So being able to bring in a large responsive document like that is an important part of managing numbers like that. So I'm really looking forward to the positive impacts from that. So those are the ones for us that we're currently kind of trying to understand.
Hey, Steve, do you have a question?
Yeah. Dave, when do you think you'll have your summary of where we are on each one of the things that has been either funded up through engineering or funded for construction, you know, based on town meeting votes? And particularly, the one I'm after is the HVAC project at Hastings. Because I saw something that came from our representatives in regards to, quote unquote, the grant of money.
Yep.
And the thing is, I don't know whether that's already what we anticipated or it was additional money.
We are meeting the 29th, I believe, to kind of pull that apart a little bit. I think candidly speaking, the number was significant. You know, that's, just to add to Amber's comment related to capital planning, it's also the consideration of inflation and what we're paying now because of the escalation on price, supply chain issues and things of that nature. So I'm hoping that after we convert on the 29th, that we have a better sense as to impact allocations and what are the resources for funding that we may or may not have access to for specifically the HVAC and the ADA issue at Hastings.
I think we read it in Hannah Kane's statement.
Yeah, and to your point, Steve, I think it adds both opportunity but layers of complications to the circle of what's happened at the Hastings project. Two pieces to that, which is, to the Hastings project, we have money allocations already voted and set aside and borrowed. And then we have ones that we need and so related to the ADA. And so I think what we want to do is look at the three pieces of that puzzle and see whether or not we would, we need to move around the order of that work. So I know that involves you at the table for that discussion. I've asked Bob and Dave to do what they're doing, which is to look at the preliminary feedback on the ADA numbers and to then look at all three pieces of that funding, inclusive of the roof, which also plays into that circle. And the last cost estimate on the Hastings roof had been 2.4 million. So, you know, that's a big ticket number. We pulled that one out of capital and dropped in Armstrong. So that pushed the Hastings roof down the capital list. And it still leaves it as part of the three-part puzzle to how to get the right order of operations for the ADA piece, the roof piece and the HVAC. So that's the purpose of that meeting, to look at the money and the pieces and make a recommendation to you about how we should move forward.
Yeah, part of the reason why I bring it up is that we need to give timely direction to the engineers on that particular project. Because when the ADA issue came up, we basically redirected them to get that solved first. You know, certainly the escalation since January 1 of this year certainly hasn't helped our cause in being able to get that work done. But, so the sooner, the sooner you can figure out what the current status of all that is, the faster we'll be able to try to unscramble the mess.
And I agree with you. And one of the things we talked about is whether or not, and again, in front of town meeting, is there a need to request a re-delineation of the direction of those HVAC funds to instead target the ADA as opposed to asking for more money and get that piece done first? So there's a definite ask in the priority of looking at the lists. We don't have a clear recommendation until we see the ADA number. And I think they preliminarily are still missing two pieces that we need.
That's my understanding. We're not there yet.
Thoughts from other committee members, questions? I have a few that I've thought about when it comes to the budget FY '24. Parents have asked me, you know, what aspects of the budget are really COVID recovery? I know that we're going to see enrollment numbers in October to see if it's, you know, there's a piece of that, which, you know, hopefully we'll see maybe there won't be an impact on the budget. But as, if anyone's listening, we used SOR 1, 2, and 3 for COVID issues at the time during COVID. ARPA was an offset to funds that were used for COVID from our budget that were used on capital projects. I think there is some confusion in the community that ARPA is COVID recovery funding. It is not.
Nope.
Not at all. There's just confusion. So there's an aspect about COVID recovery when it comes to academics. Is there a need for additional math tutors or reading specialists or reading, you know, instructors to offset this potential gap that existed from COVID? And so does that impact our FY '24 budget in a piece that, how do we recover from learning that has been missed, especially for kids who've, you know, that there's a gap? So parents have asked me about that.
Yeah, no, that's a good, so I would say we'll just add it to our lists of looking at projected potential impacts. My general instinct is that it would fall into the planning that we already have in place around class sizes being kept smaller, keeping our staffing robust for the literacy interventions, the tutor support at Gibbons that we added, additional math tutor support at Gibbons. And we provided really robust support for students through teacher contact and support. Our other COVID intervention funds went for PPE gear, which we paid for, you know, the masks, the supplies, the other types of things that, and the test kits and all the types of things that we were able to purchase. The other thing that we spent a lot of HVAC money on was the additional layer of staffing when we ran the dual platform. So we had a whole second tier of staff that was carried during that time for the remote learning. Those are residual to where we are now. And the last piece is that we spent a lot of that funding just for people's points to air filtration and the additional classroom-based air filters, which were very expensive, and a lot of the plastic dividers and all those types of things. So certainly a very expensive set of interventions and the funds were a real support.
Steve, did you have a thought about that?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everybody that Timmy was here at the last meeting and questions that I asked of her were simply how many teachers do we, did we add to the program for this coming school year? And I think the answer was one, which means that if you get rid of the alphabet soup that we've been dealing with with COVID, with ARPA, with all that stuff, the bottom line of our budget is going forward to carry the staff we had and one new position based on what's needed going forward. And I think that's the simplest answer to where are we in regards to all the stuff that happened? And what do we need to do going forward? So the way I interpreted what she had to say was we needed one new staff member and we're going to need a budget to support them, no matter what the alphabet soup is that goes with it. And so obviously, that's what we will be bringing to town meeting in a future budget for the next fiscal year. So if I'm wrong on any of that, just let me know.
No, not at all.
Then certainly, Daniel takes a really large portion of that work through developing the October 1 report with Scott Henderson and looking at the impact of our numbers. And again, you know, I think other pieces where we see potential impacts, but fairly stable as we are looking to be, you know, with regard to overall enrollment. I think we'll see the grow out of two more small developments over the next two years. So I think that'll come forward in his work when we look at that during the early stages of the budget.
So I had a couple more things. Raghu Nanak is not here, but I know in the past he has brought this up. And I agree that mental health resources, I would want that reviewed as well. Do we need to add anything for support of students for mental health in all the schools? Not just from COVID impact, but just in general. We had issues before COVID, you know, those are concerns that a lot of us have or parents have. Certainly, teachers see some of that in their own classrooms. And finally, inflation. Inflation effects on the budget, I would want us to review. How does inflation impact supplies and resources that we, that are part of our budget? And how does that impact the budget in the future? Because as inflation happens and the budget for those items stays the same, is there an impact on needing to increase for that reason? Something else to think about.
Yeah, no, thank you. We'll put that on the list as well. And I appreciate, again, that's the purpose of this conversation now, is just to escalate out the big pieces that we'll use to review. From there, we'll boil this down into a set of presentation slides that provide a synopsis of our areas of potential impact FY '24 that we'll bring forward to the summit. I would say the last, you know, the last piece is that certainly, I think we're going to have trouble teasing out potentially the impacts from inflation versus supply chain issues. And when you look at the impacts in construction, where we've had major projects, as has the town, the impacts from supply chain escalation costs are going to be, I... town, the impacts from supply chain escalation costs are going to be, I mean, I'm not sure we can get the analysis right, but it certainly has had true impact around the cost of materials and supplies, and how much of that will settle back down, and whether or not, you know, inflation will end up covering that gap and it'll stay where it is. Like, hard for us to read at this point, but you'd like to think that the numbers where you see a $2.4 million roof, which, you know, the escalation rate on that has been so high, that, you know, will that come back down? We have things that are going to go out to bid. The Chillers are going to go out to bid here for the high school, for that voted project. And, you know, fingers crossed that we don't see, again, huge escalations in those costs. So, but thank you. These are, this is the mental work. I think it's good when the public are kind of listening to have opportunities to see the way we start to pull out the pieces of this work in what ends up being, you know, a $60 million-plus budget to run a very, very substantial school district for the town.
Arutika, did you want to add something?
Yeah, sorry, this is about something mentioned, like, earlier, but I didn't want to cut anyone off. But in terms of the issue with maybe gaps in learning over COVID and needing tutoring, like, I'm sure most teachers and some parents are aware that, like, NHS does offer peer tutoring, and the standards for it would be that the student would have gotten, like, and I think it's like a 90% or higher in that same course in order to be able to tutor that student. But I don't think many students know that this is available. It wasn't until I became an NHS tutor that I even knew that it existed. I think that would be a really good way to kind of, like, supplement that by making sure that that, the resource is available, but making sure that people know that it exists. Because a lot of the students, I tutor two students who needed to get their grades up to continue playing their sports, and they feel that it's, they're a lot more comfortable being tutored by another student. And seeing that, especially the most popular subject to get tutored in would be math, and like, having a student who understands, who's been through the same exact curriculum, I think helps as well. So maybe, like, finding a way to push that out and making sure that students know that that resource exists. Right now, if you try to go to the Westboro High School website, there isn't a, it's very hard to find a form to directly ask for something like that. I read through the handbook because I was trying to figure out where it was. And you would have to, like, go to your counselor, then ask your counselor, who would ask the director who runs it, which I believe is Ms. Costa at the moment. But perhaps making that more accessible for students might be a good idea to supplement that.
Definitely. Thank you. I think two other pieces as we look at the resources. We also have a homework helper model at the Gibbons. We also have, we had a very successful summer recovery program at Gibbons that provided, students were coming and, you know, asking to join. It was such an enjoyable section of a very robust summer program that was provided, again, was part of kind of that COVID recovery work. So I think, I think to Arutika's point, I agree. I think, one, called out in the strategic plan is an innovation and redo of our website, which is really needed to streamline the way you can find resources. But I do think being able to share a do you note to parents would be a nice piece for us, so Daniel and I can look at that.
Well, thank you. That was great. I appreciate that addition. And we're going to move along to the discussion about the town meeting warrant article that we started to talk about at our last meeting. And Amber, you want to start us through that?
Definitely. So at the last meeting, did she, that's not what I'm looking for, but, okay, that's one of the pieces. That's okay, you can put that up. So at our last meeting, Dave, you know the one that I want? I want the one that is that, that she pretty sure that.
Short summary.
Thank you. Well, I could do that quickly. So one of the things that we talked about at the last meeting, we had a quality discussion, which looked at the fact that we have, for multiple years, sustained the capacity to manage variability in our tuition needs and our special education needs through internal budget allocation to cut and to amend during the year to cover costs that happen while we're running school. And I think, I think the active volatility of a school district is just a part that people don't understand unless they are participating in the inner circle of having 4,000 students and 700 staff, and the moving pieces of people moving and coming and going. So, you know, this past year, we had an experience where during the '22 budget, we had eight students go out beyond the end of the budget cycle development in December. So we talked last week in depth about the impact from the cost of those students, and that the way that we manage that internally is to cut back other allocations, to do line item change to cost impacts, and that we have always used as a stabilization fund our capacity to pay up to three months of tuition ahead, so that you have a buffer of potential coverage to the cost of students going out, or a tuition being raised, or changes to high-impact costs in the tuition setting. We've also used to hold out $100,000 that we set aside from Circuit Breaker, also available on top of that prepay, so that you had a buffer of really running around a standard $600,000 that let you pick up the changes of a move-in where we had to hire a para, or something that happens all within special education during the span of the year. Last year, we faced a really, an anomaly of a year in the sense that we had several outplacements, and we utilized all of that prepay, all of those set-asides, and closed out the FY '22 budget as we needed to. And we then had no funds available to begin a prepay into FY '23. So we have no funds available this year coming in to manage changes that happened during the year, and we have eight students encumbered in outplacement at $539,000 beyond the tuition allocation amount as of now. So the complications of that, brought forward the warrant article. And I had shared last, at the last meeting, that since those students went out, we've had one additional outside placement at $89,800, which actually brought the impact cost of encumbered cost to $628,000. Have you been able to locate them?
Yes.
Did you show it to Daniel? There we go. I feel like I'm, I was filling the void there for a minute. Thank you. So this is the document that we used last time that I think summarized it in a way that everybody could follow. You have the eight students that I just mentioned during FY '22, and the cost for them coming into the year, encumbered the gap, is that $539,000. We then had an additional student outplace this September 15 for the 898, bringing the current unanticipated costs for this year in FY '23 to the $628,800. And I included for kind of edification and understanding the complications of managing the complexities of a district, to see that we always have these high-number volatile costs that are at play during the year, and that that prepay of that tuition allows us to manage those as they occur. So we also have at play several other costs that typically are paid with those sped allocations that we set aside. So you have two settlement agreements that have currently occurred. Those are one-time costs. And you have a 10th and 11th student currently looking at potential outplacements. And again, I show those as not happening, but potentials, and they might, you know, again, those are examples where we have to look preliminarily at what an outplacement would be, what's being proposed, and then also the counter-proposals that we develop internal programming supports for, which is a way that we've been able to have really strong programming, where we can say, we can develop those pieces that you feel you need. Let us, you know, in a responsive programming model, provide those additional supports. Sometimes the offset might then be an additional para, or additional support time from a BCBA, or other types of counseling supports. And those types of impacts fall on the budget side. And again, we manage them during the year, utilizing that stabilization funding. So at the last meeting, we had, I thought, a very meaningful conversation about this. And you remember that the Circuit Breaker is always a year in arrears, and that the impact to those students that have been outplaced, that Circuit Breaker won't increase against those totals until the next round of Circuit Breaker. So that number will come out this year, and that will be for FY '25. So we should see some relief when we get that number. We always are transparent about what it will be. We also are getting coverage from, to, for some parts of transportation. Remember when the state provided some allocation reimbursement for transportation? And all of those are things that, again, we carry, the contract for transportation can usually pick up unanticipated van drives and other things like that. That's what David was alluding to in his discussion. But certainly, there's a window to where that would tap out. But the transportation budget should cover the additional transportation costs for these students, for the one, that number nine student would need to be transported, as an example. And that 899 doesn't include probably $20,000 in transportation, so, on average. So, again, a complexity that doesn't usually get a lot of, you know, public discord discussion. It's all part of operational cost management during the year. And so I asked you to reflect on the discussion, and tonight, I guess, my request would be that you support a number that we need to move forward with in the warrant article. The $539,000 is the current number that I believe I put into the actual warrant article in the summer, when I carried the cost. When Dave rolled all the numbers, I brought that number forward and put in the warrant article as a placeholder. I think, you know, you need to discuss a little bit, are you want, do you want to move forward with that original number, or do you want to pick up student number nine? And then request, because those are known encumbered costs, of which we have a deficit in FY '23 currently, and then know that we would have to manage these other costs with the cuts internally to the budget. And I think it certainly provides, you know, again, the opportunity for these discussions. So I guess I would turn it to you and open it up for discussion, or questions.
So I'm going to have Steve speak in a moment, but it looks like there's four different numbers. One is the $539.
Yeah.
We're talking about students, the eight students. One is $628 with student number nine. One is with the settlements and student number nine, and that's $762,264. And a fourth number is the student number nine, the settlements, the eight students. And the projections of tuitions for 10 and 11, that's a number of $938,285. So it seems like there's four different potential numbers. Steve, did you want to start us off?
Well, as you've explained, we have no buffer. Historically, we start with the idea, and the Commonwealth Massachusetts school departments, as well as every other part of town government, cannot deficit spend. So we have to manage our budget based on what the town meeting has voted historically. No matter what, we cannot overspend the amount of budget money that the town has been, that the town meeting has granted us. So in the past, the way school departments have dealt with, and I guess other parts of the town government as well, has built in buffers, so that in fact, if there is, let's call it money left over, that we use it to offset future costs. So that in fact, at the end of the year, we have, in effect, the contingency that allows the school budget, as well as other parts of the town budget, to, in effect, come in within or less than what the town meeting voted. Obviously, because of COVID and all the things that COVID has created, we have lost our buffer. And in fact, worse than that, we now have encumbered, that is, we have reduced other spending that's in the current budget by the $539,000. That's already lost. And the only way we can make up for that, if the town meeting does not do anything, is to cut other places. Well, the only place in our budget that we can cut to make up for the $539,000 are teachers, because in effect, that's 80% of our budget is staff payroll. So my feeling on this issue is, if the numbers that we have on the screen are more than 50% possible, then we are not doing the town a favor by not going to town meeting with a number that is going to restore the opportunity to deliver the education that was promised in the last year's budget. And in fact, I would recommend that we bring to the town meeting the $937,000 plus or minus, with the idea that as some of these things perhaps go away, that we can reduce our ask by whatever the changes are. As you know, we can't increase what we asked for a warrant article more than 10%. And I think it's Russian roulette to go into the town meeting without having true disclosure of what the impact would be on the schools. In particular, since, in fact, we're trying to climb out of a hole that was created by the inability of students to be in a classroom. That to then have to cut staff in order to pay for what we see on this screen above us would be a terrible impact on the school system, and we would not be going to the town meeting with true transparency of what the impact could be. And these things are out of our control. If, in fact, through process, doing the very best we can for each student, then in fact, they still must leave the district. That is a true cost that will come, and we have to pay that bill. And so when that bill arrives, if we don't have enough money already voted, then we have to reduce what other things we would spend money on in order to cover these costs. And the thing is, going forward, if we then are going to recover somehow or another, the budget impact will appear in the future year. There isn't any other way to avoid these things that are true costs if they occur. And so my feeling is, I want to bring forward what we think could happen, and as we can resolve these components between now and the time we go to town meeting, that we reduce the ask in the article. And so I can't see any logical way to do less than that and be honest to the people who have kids in school, as well as the taxpayers. So.
So I think you're saying the $938,285.
Yes.
Okay. Other thoughts from the school committee? What do you think, Steve?
Yeah, I agree. Initially, I was reluctant to support the $938,285 because two of the items that are projected. I completely agree with Steve that these are costs that have already been paid for, and if the money isn't there, it's being cut from other, it's being taken away from the mouths of students. So I was unaware of the rule about not being able to elevate the amount above 10%. So that has changed my mind. I'm in support of the idea of asking for $938,285 and then working down from there if necessary.
What was your thought about the 10%? I didn't understand that.
I just wasn't aware that there's that rule.
Yeah, that once you draft an article, you cannot increase the amount. In other words, when it's posted, let's say 14 days before the town meeting, that number can't be increased any more than 10%. So if we really feel that this can happen to us, between now and then, of course, we have a few months. And so as some of these other things get resolved, you know, we can obviously tell the town that we don't need as much as that, because it's been resolved. But if it's But if it's not resolved and they get, they occur, where there's nothing else we can do except to reduce the money spent in other places in our budget.
I want to clarify what they're saying. I think what you're both saying is that if you go with a lower number and you get to town meeting and you know that the projections are definitely going to happen, then you can't increase more than 10%. So that's what you're saying.
Yeah. So what it amounts to is let's say we went in with a 539 and hoped that the rest didn't happen. That means that in fact, we've already decided to cut teachers for a portion of this amount of money.
Kristin, do you have thoughts on this?
I do. And I have something slightly different in which I have been thinking about this, listening to the discussion. So I totally appreciate the discussion and I find it really helpful. I am more in favor of looking at the number that takes us up to those two settlements. So I believe you said it was.
762, 264.
264, okay. And the reason is that because the other two are projected and, I don't know, maybe it's just because I've been sitting on the school committee for a while budgeting, I'm really uncomfortable with projections. Like we always budget with the, for the exact students we have at the exact time. And it's hard for me to think about the what ifs. I don't know that that's fiscally irresponsible, although I do understand what Steve and Steve have been saying about if we don't have it, then we would have to cut. And I think I could live with a $200,000 cut.
It's two teachers.
Well, it could be something else.
Or something else.
Or something else.
So yeah, so I appreciate the conversation.
So I just want to say that I'm uncomfortable with the what ifs and I don't know that that's.
Well, you know, to the extent the numbers are there, okay? If we don't think they're probable, okay, and that's different than possible. If we don't think they're probable, then they don't belong there and they shouldn't be on the list. And then we suffer, then we suffer whatever happens if something else occurs. But if they're on the list for believability and they could happen, then we're, in my opinion, then we, the school committee, would be remiss.
Thank you.
Not to present to the town what could happen.
And could they go into the FY '24 budget? The two projections, should they come to fruition? Then the FY '24 could take on those two into the budget for March town meeting.
As long as they happen after June 30.
Right. So a couple of pieces. I mean, again, I appreciate the bandwidth of you tracking the complexity of this. I just want to say it's, you're in FY '23. We are making those expenditures now. We have a current gap in '23. And I think our request at the fall town meeting, which is coming up, literally, that's going to close here very quickly. And that request needs to be, I believe, concrete to true costs. And I modeled the projections for you because I also think other people beyond you are trying to understand it. And I want people to understand that during the year, we are always deferring other costs and making other changes as we cope with the types of things that come into play during the year, which can have big financial impact. Steve is, it's an and, everyone's correct. Steve is correct that during the year in the past, when we had, say, these two students, 10 and 11, where they, where they might end up, it's a, it's a projection, if they were to go out, I think we would have relied on the stabilization funding to help us cover that. So this year, we came into it with zero. So we will, we will make cuts in other areas. So I think it's important to understand, you have the true running deficit that is in FY '23. We go, and I'm requesting that we go back to town meeting and ask for the cost of the encumbered funds. And that would be the 628, 833 is encumbered to be expended. And we have the two outplacement settlements, which is real money that will be paid out in FY '23. So if you talk about true costs and impact in this current budget where we are now, doors are open five days and we are spending this current budget, that is, I believe, a reasonable discussion that that's an appropriate depth that you're bringing to this. The two projections are to also model for you that we will have to make other changes. And yes, all of these will flow into FY '24 as costs when you see that tuition gap number, we always do that, we always do the circuit breaker gap slide. This year, the gap will pick these up and they will be in the tuition cost. So again, I think, my recommendation, I respect the conversation. I think as well, and I'll let you continue it, I think that if we have to cut for students 10 and 11, should they outplace during the FY '23, we will recover that when we place them into tuition cycle for FY '24. And we should have them within the cycle. I think the other piece is those are true costs for outplacement. And that number is the 762, 264 is the two private settlements and true encumbered costs, which was the one that Kristin was holding up. You're all doing actually very correct as we look at the layering and you're, I've already asked you to build FY '24 in your head and now we're talking about the expenditures of FY '23 currently. So, you know, you're toggling back and forth between the planning of both those worlds. And all of it feels unfortunate when we need to, you know, we've never gone back to fall town meeting to ask for coverage around special ed costs. So, you know, that will, it's an important ask for us to have clear and not open up the door for people to question if we're adding students in as maybes. So we know what that feels like on town meeting floor. And if you open it up where people might want to make amendments and things against their opinions, that doesn't feel as clean as known students encumbered out. So that's, that's my feeling.
As stewards of the town, my feeling is that the difference between the 762, 264 and that higher number is 176,021.
Yep.
And I feel like in good faith, we should make the cuts. And it just feels, I mean, I go back, you know, a couple of years when we were making major cuts into the budget. And it feels like streamlined too much and the outcome is we are where we are. You know, even though this was unforeseen and it seems like an anomaly that this happened. But because we're so streamlined, where do you make the cuts? You're sort of at that place.
I'm holding the projections or I wouldn't make the recommendation to you. I mean, I think it's important that, you know, after, you know, eight plus years of managing budgets with you, I don't usually, you know, try to lean you in a clear direction unless I feel like I can provide quality instruction to our students. And I will probably go back in and tighten down other areas and hold, and again, for each month that those students don't place out, you get a prorated amount against that 86. So, you know, or the 89. So again, as projections, I think it's important for people to understand the numbers. But I, I believe that the clear recommendation would be to cover the known costs and then I'll keep you updated on the projections of other impact. But.
You know, it's up to us to decide on the number because that 176,021 is going to continue into next year. And so if we don't bring it about now, it's still a deficit in the future. So it's something to think about either if we don't, if we're missing it for FY '23 and we don't put it into FY '24, that seems like a problem. But we could just do the whole thing now and it's really up to the four of us to sit here and come up with that number and.
No, it isn't.
Well, no, it's up to town meeting.
No, no. What we're deciding here is how we're going to argue what the potential is. Okay? So far, we've gotten to this, I don't remember the exact number, the 700,000 number.
762, yep.
Based on what this table is telling us. The issue in my mind is I'm afraid to present what our thinking is to the town meeting for the town meeting to decide because the penalty isn't on the school committee. It's on the student population and the people who pay taxes. I have no problem with being honest with them, to tell them what's going on and let the whole crowd decide what's going on rather than just four of us tonight dealing with a $176,000 deficit. If the town meeting chooses not to give us that or even the 500,000, we are going to deal with it. And part of the reason why the town meeting might vote that is because they don't trust us. Okay? Because I think it's absolutely clear what's going on here. What's going on here is that the state has created a policy and a program by which students who require certain services go where they have to go based on the way the program works. And once that happens, the bill arrives. And so if I had $100 in my wallet and I thought I was going to spend it on a whole bunch of different things and somebody showed up with a bill, let's call it the oil bill, and it took $50, $50 out of my $100 right off the bat because I didn't plan on that last fall. Okay? I had planned on maybe 25 bucks. That's sort of the logic of what we're talking about here. And I have no problem with presenting to the public what's going on and the fact that the bill is arriving. And what we already know is that the bill is going to be at least $700,000 and it could very well be the other. Now, if it turns out to be the other, our ask at town meeting gets reduced from whatever was on the ticket. And that's the difference. And I don't have a problem with us as we learn more and we get to town meeting to make that reduction. But I, I think that it's very difficult without any buffer in our current budget to somehow or another make up $200,000 out of, at this point, you'd have to say, how could we do that? I don't know that we could. So, you know, obviously, I'm arguing strenuously for the logical higher number with the idea that by being honest at town meeting, we'll tell them what it really turned out to be when we get there. But the alternative is we cannot increase it. And so that's my fear. And I've been caught in that as, as a spokesperson for the school committee at town meeting a couple of times. So live and learn.
Thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I hear all sides of this because that, you know, I do hear the, what Amber and Kristin are saying about, let's go with the fixed costs that are there. And I absolutely hear what Steve's saying. And so when I think about, I've not attended enough town meetings to really be able to kind of game this out in my head to, but I do kind of, so I'm considering the optics of asking for a number that's close to six figures versus the optics of one that's 762. That might not be much of an optical difference. So then I'm thinking about the optics of fixed costs versus some projected costs. And I could see some fairly cantankerous people at town meeting saying, why am I voting on something that's projected? I want to shoot this down and that going down a rabbit hole. So I mean, I'm, but because Steve is more than happy to be fully transparent and explain what we're actually looking for, and I think he has tremendous credibility at the town meeting to explain this in good faith, that these are real costs and that even though they're projected at this moment, we, I mean, as a CPAC chair, those are numbers we should be happy to settle for as a district. So I am leaning toward the full amount, the nine, whatever, the 938, 285 and explaining in full transparency what's at stake and letting the town decide and hoping that they hear our side of it. But if they don't, the worst they can do is lower it, which if we were to ask 762, the same worst outcome, the worst they could do is lower it and give us zero. So I'm leaning toward the higher amount, highest amount.
So I have a thought here. If we went with the 938, 285, remember that town meeting is October 17th. That's before the projections are known. I think the difference should come out of, let's say it doesn't happen, then you take it off the next budget cycle so that you're not spending money that didn't happen. That's one way of handling that larger versus the smaller. Do you understand what I'm saying? Let's say we go with the higher and then on November 1st and December 1st, you know the exact, and then you take it out. Can you do that at, you know?
In the annual, yeah.
In the annual?
Right. We could go to the annual if those two outplace and we haven't managed it internally, we're in the current fiscal year of '23. And if we had to, we could ask for an operational offset. I, again, I just, I, I have, I agree, you guys are so skilled on town meeting floor. I also think that we, respectfully, I'm going to speak as a superintendent here, that we've always tried to recognize that talking about individual children and even if they're student 11 and student 10, I, I think that we've always kind of packaged costs as tuitions. And so I just, I'm trying to look at what that rabbit hole can look like in discussion and I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable.
Because they're not settled.
And I believe that if we had those potentials out, and again, I showed you the potentials so you could understand the trajectory of the funding decisions we manage during the year. And as, as the shepherds of the funding, it's important that we keep you updated. But I, I feel that the factual encumbered number is the best number to defend on town meeting floor. And very few people that walk through the door are going to get able to understand all of this. We know clean, simple, clear notes have always stood us in very good truthful faith with the town meeting. And I think that you can say, these are known costs encumbered to run the district, as Steve said, you know, based upon what the bill does to us when it arrives. And we need to pay that bill this year in FY '23. And that would be the 762, 264.
Yeah.
And I think in good faith to what we've always brought forward to town meeting, it's the known costs. And in our operational budget right now, that's a known cost.
And I agree 100%. And Lisa, when you were talking about earlier, like go with the higher number and then maybe give some back if we didn't get that, that, that is, now you're muddying the waters and now nobody can trust what numbers we're bringing forward. We're over asking for something that we haven't spent yet. I don't think that's fiscally responsible.
And Amber just reminded us that what are those projections? We're talking about tuitions that are not known yet, not for sure. I mean, you know what the number is, but you don't know whether they're going to happen or not.
No, but two more.
And if you thought you had the money.
Right. Another family could move into Westboro in December and have two students and outplacements. It's unknown.
Or someone might move out.
There's so much about the school year that's unknown. And then if one of these students.
Then we have another town meeting to try to raise that money.
No, but if one of these students moves out of district, we've just got back, you know, half a million dollars. So I, I'm only comfortable with voting the 762, 264 on town, like to bring that to town meeting.
Well, there's a good reason why we have five members on this board because at this point, we'd get nowhere.
So does anyone have a, is there more discussion? Well, we can come back to it even after a motion.
Well, I'd like to make a motion, if that's okay. I'd like to make a motion to bring the number 762,264 to the fall town meeting.
Second.
Okay. Is there a discussion about that number and that, that motion? I mean, yeah.
Yeah, so I know I'm all over the place.
Okay, that's okay. That's why we're having this.
So listening to what Amber just said is, is what changed my mind. She mentioned muddying the waters and, you know, your initial point about not bringing to town meeting projected numbers, I, in principle, I entirely agree with. I also think. I also think that that's money kind of already spent even though technically it's not, which is, I think, reason enough to bring the 762. But Amber's point about not, not muddying the waters where we get into a, a sort of student per student conflict where we don't really want these granular numbers to, you know, to be a part of town discussion. And so I think just a number that we can in good faith say, these are encumbered numbers, not projected numbers, please support this and hope that, you know, that that is good enough.
Right, those are known bills that arrived. I mean, Steve's articulation always crystallizes for us the discussion on town meeting floor, and I think his example is exactly correct. The bill arrives and it comes after we've budgeted, and this bill is that exact number right now.
And I don't want this to inadvertently, it's not anything we would intentionally do, but I don't want this to inadvertently reflect negatively on any student with special needs, any family with special needs, what students need to be successful in school and in life, the types of education that they need. This is what our students need. And I, they fully deserve it, they deserve to have it fully funded, we have to fund it by law. But I also believe that this is what a school district does, that we educate every child to the best of our ability, and this is one way that we can accommodate students with special needs. So I don't, I just don't want this to reflect poorly and have people think on town meeting floor that, you know, anything negative towards a student who has greater needs than what we can provide right here in our physical buildings of Westboro Public Schools.
Because the playing field is not even among students. That's why they cost different amounts. Some have more needs, some have less needs, and we welcome them all when they move to Westboro.
Absolutely.
Just out of curiosity, sorry, most of this is like going right over my head for the most part, but if the town doesn't approve like a sufficient amount of money, where would the, because then you're, from my understanding, it would be like, we would be cutting costs from other areas. Where would that likely come out of?
So we would go to town meeting in October and request the budget gap. And then we would, based upon town meeting, if they didn't vote that, leadership team would come together and develop a list of cuts to cover the gap as we move through the year. So, I mean, that's, that's the charge of no deficit budget spending. So, you know, we would have to, we have to close out even to the voted amount by the end of the year. So that would require a variety of types of, you know, cuts and plans and monitoring of cost impacts. It would certainly shape the year.
I think the true answer to that is, you know, based on how that process works, it would be the one that did the least damage to the school system. Could be anything.
So what would get cut, so would they, the town would also decide that, but you guys would?
No, they just decide the number and then the school committee is charged with that budget management with, with us. And so we would work together to shepherd, as Mr. Duratt just said, the least impact to the lives and educational implementation of the year.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
It's a good question, really good question because that's what people listening are thinking about, where would it be cut? And it is, you know, that is what we, we make hard decisions. And yet we also recognize that this impacts our close to 4,000 students and it impacts our town taxpayers, and so it's hard decisions. I think I come back to the whole idea that we don't budget. We always draw a line in the sand of where we are with our budget, meaning how many students we have right now. That's what we have to base it on. You're right, Kristen was right about it. We've never done it differently. We've never really projected and.
Never done this before.
That's true. It's an anomaly. Yeah, it's an anomaly. So it makes it really hard to think about. But I also trust that what Amber's saying when she looks at the 176,021, that she will find the least impact to our students and should we need that money? And so I guess I stand thinking that 762, 264 is the right amount for me to vote on. So that's where I think, that's where my head is at. It feels irresponsible to do something that's projected versus real. We didn't do that with number of students in the past. We had more students after. We figured it out, she figured it out. The leadership team made cuts at different times over the last years when that population was growing. And you're right, this is different, but feel somewhat a piece of that, which is we vote for what is right now.
And Jesus Christ. So I guess my final comment is this. We have a process in the town by which each department contributes to how we get to town meeting and what it is by not considering what our real exposure is. And in fact, we won't have that discussion with the other members of the process, the town manager, the finance committee, the board of selectmen, or others who want to play into the discussion. By picking the number that so far seems to be the one that might carry, the 762, 264, we haven't given the rest of the town the opportunity to participate in how we get there. And really, all I've suggested is that we carry the bigger number until we have that process in hand. We have up to the day of town meeting to reduce the number that we are asking for verbally and up to the 14th day before, before it appears on the warrant. And having said that, I believe that in a good faith effort in the discussion of what this is and allowing for the remaining issue to be resolved either pro or con, that we have protected the students to the best we can based on what could happen to us. And in fact, until we get to town meeting, the argument that we've never done this before, first of all, is true, and the second is we've never had to do it before because no one ever presented to the town, to the board, excuse me, to the school committee, a bill that must be paid. No one ever did that before because it's always been our choice to go to town meeting and ask for money to deliver a product. And in this case, we have no choice if the bill arrives. So I think there's two numbers on the table, and I think there's only one that's probably going to get voted.
It could go up after the discussions at the other boards.
I certainly will be like replicating this conversation. I will be replicating this conversation tomorrow at AFC. Steve will be with me. And, and then on the 13th, next Tuesday, going to the select board to repeat the discussion again. So to Steve's point, the strong participation of boards, understanding the impact. Again, oftentimes when I'm presenting with you or putting things in front of us to shape the discussion and to hear, we don't, we can only talk about this when we're together. So they are complicated conversations but appropriate because they're important decisions. And, you know, so we've been having a long conversation about this, and it's an authentic discussion of what it looks like to make these kind of complex decisions. Both numbers are correct. And I think you're right, we can represent that forward. We certainly have seen the select board recommend increasing a number in the past to make sure that that doesn't happen versus, we always, you know, we prepare for the idea that people might want us to cut it. We've been running budget sessions where people have been asking for us to manage those reductions and we've tried to be partners in that. So it has honed our perspective to try to bring a tight number. And so I just, I respect the conversation. I think we can carry forward, you know, whatever you vote in the number. And Steve is right that the discussion is live until it's voted on town meeting floor. So how the discussion continues to unfold, this is, you're providing right now your best current thinking to how you understand it.
So we can, we could vote on this motion and we could vote again because the warrant closes on September 23rd. We have a meeting on the 21st. We watch the discussions, so we hear, you bring up the numbers tomorrow night, we bring it up next week at, at a select board. And recognizing that either we're vote a number and why, and the discrepancy about, you know, not discrepancy, but these are two real numbers.
It's creative, you could hold your vote.
We could. We could hold the vote till the 21st and these two numbers get into the discussion. But there's a motion there that has a second. And I think we have to vote a yea or nay, but it can be no with the, I mean, that we continue this discussion in those two board meetings, meaning advisory finance committee and select board, and we come back to our September 21st meeting to rehash this discussion so that we feel more certain about the direction. Because Arisrika brings up a really good point, there will be cuts if those projections happen. They feel strong that those are going to happen, you know, they do. So that's one idea. So that may change your vote.
And I'm going to throw out another idea.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm keeping an eye on the clock. But I, I feel like we should vote because I would like to enter the meeting with the finance committee and the select board with, like, we've done our work, like, we've done work on this and this is what we're bringing forward. Now, we could change it again, we could revote again. Certainly, we've changed numbers and warrant articles before. I've been here where we've, you know, something's come up, adjust the number here or there. But I would like to visit the other, you know, stakeholders and get advice and opinions based on something that we bring forward rather than leaving it up to everyone else to throw in their two cents.
That wasn't suggested that we leave it up to anybody else. We have two numbers.
But we're not coming forward with a number, so it seems like we're leaving it.
I assume we're voting on this motion.
We're voting on this motion.
Okay.
And whatever the outcome is.
You made it sound like we weren't going to hold a vote tonight and then not bring forward a number at all.
She can't dodge it now because it's been.
There's a motion, there's a second, we are voting. The question becomes if we vote it down and we, there's no motion for the other number, then we would bring it to the September 21st. You are correct that if the vote were yes, we could still make a motion in the September 21st meeting.
So do something different.
And, and there's no question that we are representing at advisory finance committee tomorrow night through us, meaning through representatives of us, through Steve and Amber. And then we're going to do it again on Tuesday night to select board through us so that we can bring up these two numbers if we so choose because the, part of going to those meetings is to share what we have been discussing. So we are going to vote on 762, 264 as the motion was, and there was a second. This is just our discussion. What people might be watching is, this is how.
How we get there.
This is how we get there. We have these open meetings, it doesn't matter how long. And so here we are, really interesting, I have to say. I love democracy. Democracy is great. So any more discussion to this motion that is, that Kristen put forward, Steve Bachelor seconded it? Okay. So all in favor of that motion? All opposed to that motion? Now, I don't remember what the rules are, but I'm going to turn to my vice chair and say, what happens when there's four members and it's a two to two vote?
The motion doesn't carry.
Motion doesn't carry. So.
So I think we're assuming that we don't have a counter motion. I think, and I would not offer one because I think this schedule will deliver what I was after in the first place, which is a full and transparent presentation to the finance committee and ultimately, if we don't have an answer, which we don't have truly, because I really think that this discussion we've had is the perspective of presenting to others, what is the catch 22 to this?
Right.
And I'm happy if we just go with the information that this generates to the finance committee and ultimately, I assume to the selectmen as well.
Yeah, I agree with you, Steve. And going to other boards saying, we were missing a member and it's two to two, is very important information. So I appreciate that.
And that gives us the opportunity to present the impact.
Yep.
Okay? Because if, in my opinion, if we voted the 762, we can't discuss the impact. Somehow we're going to absorb it.
Right. Arisrika reminded us that somewhere there will be cuts. If we go with the 762 and these two projections come out, which feel real, I mean, even though it's, looks like it's in the future, it's not far in the future, and it's definitely part of FY '23, not FY '24.
Right.
So just throwing them into FY '24, as I suggested earlier, really doesn't fix the problem. Yeah. Well, this has been very interesting.
Has an interesting discussion on.
Jen.
We'll help you, Jen.
The minutes, thank you, Jen Benton, for taking minutes.
And Raghu has a lot to catch up on.
Yeah, where is Raghu to have the deciding vote? Seriously, there's a reason we have a committee of five and we are missing one of ours right now.
Thank you.
So we're going to move on to our next agenda item, student resource officer contract. And I just want to remind everyone that we annually review and approve a student resource officer contract, which we did last year. And the state now requires that districts have a more expansive agreement with your, our student resource officer. In addition to our typical contract, we now have a lengthy memorandum of understanding, an MOU, clarifying the details of the partnership, including goals, roles, and responsibilities of the SRO and the district staff with regard to student conduct. Amber has reviewed this, as has our student resource officer, Chip Dappalite, Detective Chip Dappalite, and Andrea Macnic. And it was also developed with Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Legal Council. It captures the well-detailed range of work and relationship focus that our student resource officer brings to the district. It is a state expectation that we include it. So keep in mind, what it describes is already the expectations we have for this role, but now it's in writing and very detailed. I believe that Chip Dappalite is doing a great job in this role, and I wanted to make a motion to approve this amendment to the student resource officer contract.
Second.
Do we have discussion?
I just think it's more thorough and thoughtful and Detective Dappalite has always done a great job, continues to do great work at all of our schools. He is a presence, I feel like the kids know him, they, you know, the students know why he's there, and he has great relationships with our principals and with administration, and I know works really closely with the chief. And I just like to see that level of detail spelled out in here. So I appreciate all who have worked on this update.
Anything else?
I guess I would just like to remind the town how much effort has gone into protecting the students via the police department, the school committee as well, in terms of the facilities that are there in every school. And I think we were all surprised when we had the opportunity to discuss the details of how prepared the police department is and how integrated Chip is in that program and the studies that they've all done on behalf of the protection of the students in the school system. We are very well-served by those in the police department and particularly by Chip. So again, that's the reason why, second to motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So we have a vote of four to zero, four being present, so that passes. We're moving on to our next agenda item, which is to reappoint the superintendent to the Asavet Valley Collaborative Board. This is an annual approval. I remind you all that Amber currently serves as the chair of this board. I remind you all that Amber currently serves as the chair of this board, hence it's sort of an important vote.
Very important.
So does anyone want to make a motion?
So move.
And a second, thank you. Any discussion?
I guess I'd only add that the Aspet Valley Collaborative has saved this town and the others that are in the district substantial amount of money by being able to purchase materials that support the schools in bulk. And as a result, we have been the beneficiaries of very good management by the collaborative, not only for ourselves, but for many other communities, even those who aren't necessarily in the Aspet Valley region, who are also part of the program.
Okay, yeah. Steve?
Question, has there ever been a time when you've not been on the board? Is it typical for the superintendent to serve that capacity?
So that's a great question. So again, Aspet Valley Collaborative is a cohort of all of the region districts who join. And so their board is each of the superintendents of those districts. So it's all of, it's all of those supers that are around us. It's our snow call list, it's the group. And so it's chaired annually for multiple years by one of us, and we rotate through. So I'm in my cycle of support. So again, they do our, they do the transportation contract negotiation for van pool. They do, again, contract negotiation in support for bulk purchasing of paper and other types of supplies. They provide job-alike meetings and professional development across the region of those school districts. And they have special ed programming that allows them to cluster specialized program needs for students. So really, a range of services that collaboratives provide. Supporting Aspet Valley is an important part of our work. We've seen some collaboratives collapse, and I think they provide an essential interconnection tool for districts.
So the motion is to reappoint superintendent to the Aspet Valley Collaborative Board. All in favor?
Aye.
A vote of four to zero, four being present, and that passes. And we'll move on to a policy update of policies EBC dash S and EBC FA. Sometimes we call this housekeeping. We're going to just look at the two. EBC dash seven, I mean, S dash S, which the S stands for supplemental. It's a general interim policy on COVID-related issues. It covered how we ran the district during COVID, such as we altered the policy about class size to accommodate social distancing, we accommodated school calendar, what counts as a day, because of that shutdown period. We had time on learning might have been sort of changed for a moment there during COVID. Visitors in school buildings was another example. Illness and contact tracing was done. There was a bunch added to this policy that were all COVID-related policies. So since they are no longer necessary, the policy has been rescinded by the Massachusetts Association of School Committee members. And so do we have a motion to remove the policy EBC dash S? So moved. Second over here, and any discussion? All in favor? Oh, I see, four to zero in favor of rescinding this policy EBC dash S. I feel like a weight has been, has come off my shoulders. How about anyone else?
It's nice that we have a range of practices and policies that will exist for us as districts and communities. And it's like trauma planning, it's emergency planning. And the practices of what we learned, we want to put in the rearview mirror, and at the same time, they'll be available to us if we need them.
So EBC FA is about face coverings. This was a, it appears to need an amendment. This policy is in accordance with the guidance and recommendations from the CDC, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. The following requirements are in place until further notice, and it gives a list. The one that needs to be altered is, it says, by federal public health order, all students and staff are required to wear a mask on school buses. Yet masks are no longer required on school buses anymore. So do we have a motion to amend the policy EBC FA to state, quote, "All students and staff are not required to wear masks on school buses"?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? We have a vote of four to zero, all in favor, four being present, and that passes. The next regular session meeting of the school committee is scheduled for Wednesday, September 21st, 2022. Do we have a motion to move into executive session?
Yes, I can do that for us. I make a motion that we vote to meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, which is the administrators' union and teachers' union, and under MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to review, approve executive session minutes from August 29th, 2022.
Okay.
Second.
We have a second, and we'll do a roll call vote. Is there any discussion first? Okay, roll call vote.
Bachelor, yes.
Vincent, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Duret, yes.
Okay, I declare that an open meeting would have detrimental effect on the board's bargaining negotiating positions. This meeting will not reconvene in an open session. And so we are now in executive session, and I invite everyone to now exit the room unless you have been invited to attend this executive session.